Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of September 27, 2023. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
You please stand and join me for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll begin with good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee this evening, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Do we have anyone who would like to address the school committee? Seeing none, we'll go into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to take two of these agenda items out of order. I'm going to start at the bottom. I'm going to first start with the appointment of Catherine Rickert. Catherine Rickert will be the new director of the Wensocket Area Career and Technical Center. She couldn't be here this evening. She's actually going to start officially tomorrow. So I thought at the next school committee meeting, when she's able to attend, that I would formally announce her.
Sure.
At that meeting. Secondly, the donation of school supplies from the Toyota Corporation of Mansfield. The Toyota Corporation in Mansfield, Massachusetts held a back-to-school supply drive with all donations benefiting the Wensocket Education Department. The corporation collected many boxes of crayons, pencils, markers, notebooks, and backpacks, just to list a few of the items that were donated. On behalf of the students and staff of the Wensocket Education Department, we thank the Toyota Corporation of Mansfield for their generous donation of school supplies each year for all of the and for all the support that they show not only to our students and staff, but to our families alike. The next part of my recognitions and announcements, I say this every year and it is. It's an absolute honor and a thrill when we recognize each September our employees of the previous school year. So I'm going to step out if the committee would join me and we're going to start recognizing our employees of the year. We all set?
Oh, get in front of us.
Okay. So before I announce the Wensocket Education Department Administrator of the Year, let me describe the recipient's achievements, characteristics, and quotes from nominating staff. She's been outstanding in her position. She's very experienced and knowledgeable in the literacy field, and you can always count on her support when needed. She's dedicated, intelligent, and compassionate. Not only does she get her job done, but she loves Wensocket and the teachers and students who are here. She never backs away from doing what is best for the student and for the teacher. She's a true advocate for this district and has been instrumental in helping us move forward. It's with great pleasure that I announce the 2022-23 Wensocket Education Department Administrator of the Year, Mrs. Susan Durisso. Before I announce the Wensocket Education Department Teacher of the Year, let me describe the recipient's achievements, characteristics, and quotes from nominating staff. She goes above and beyond daily for the students in her class. She truly puts in everything she has for the good of her students, always has the students' best interests at heart. She's not someone who puts on a horse-and-pony show to try and impress administration. What you see with her is what you get all day long, every day. She puts in all the extra to make learning meaningful and rigorous for the students in her class. It's with great pleasure that I announce the 2022-23 Wensocket Education Department Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Bridget Spina. I'm going to take credit. I'm going to take credit for hiring her many years ago when I was principal of the middle school. Before I announce the Wensocket Education Department Paraprofessional of the Year, let me describe the recipient's achievements, characteristics, and quotes from nominating staff. She is extremely nice, calm, and patient with the students. She works extremely hard to go above and beyond her duties on a daily basis. She not only fulfills the expectation of an intermediate self-contained classroom assistant, she steps in to fill the role of one-to-one and one-to-two paraprofessional every day. She is always professional with other staff and students, while also showing a great deal of care for others every day. She is simply the best. It is with great pleasure that I announce the 22-23 Wensocket Education Department Paraprofessional of the Year, Mrs. Sandra LaSalle. Before I announce the Wensocket Education Department Clerical Employee of the Year, let me describe the recipient's achievements, characteristics, and quotes from nominating staff. She is the ultimate professional. She is extremely organized and efficient. She is also helpful to others and often volunteers to assist another secretary in need. She has a smile for everyone that enters McPhee. She is always friendly when asked to do something and gets the job done. Bright, friendly, respectful to others, goes above and beyond to get the job completed. It is with great pleasure that I announce the 2022-23 Wensocket Education Department Clerical Employee of the Year, Mrs. Heather Edward. Before I announce the Wensocket Education Department Custodial Maintenance Employee of the Year, let me describe the recipient's achievements, characteristics, and quote quotes from nominating staff. He is so friendly with all of the staff. Every classroom he goes into, he cleans very well. You can tell when there is a replacement for him. That's the ultimate, right? We need to think, we need to thank him for his dedication to cleaning and maintaining our building. The cleanliness and efficiency of the building is a joy for all of us. He is always there to help any of our faculty. This summer, he helped me pull a regular classroom into an art space where students can come and freely express themselves through art. He goes above and beyond to make sure Savoy looks its best, and we genuinely appreciate him and his work ethic. It is with great pleasure that I announce the 2022-23 Wensocket Education Department Custodian Maintenance Employee of the Year, Mr. Mark Paul. Yeah, all right. Ready? Here. All right, buddy. Good job. Good job. Good job.
Yeah, a little too high.
I want to have them come back up and take a picture with everyone, all of them. So you want to do this now? Why don't we do this now?
Teacher left.
She's gone.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so if all of the award recipients could come back up to the stage, we're going to take a group photo before we break for a delicious snack.
Must be the lighting.
Are we jamming over here? He said no one there, see?
Since Chef Paul and his great staff, his great students have prepared this incredible feast for us, I'll make a motion to take a 10- to 15-minute recess at 7:16 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I didn't have any of that.
Hopefully, everyone had plenty to eat, and I want to take this opportunity to thank Chef Paul and his students for a great job.
Woo! Let's do the happy dance.
First, I'll make a motion to receive and place and file the recognitions and announcements. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mr. Leclerc. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the approval. Good.
Wouldn't take a vote anyways.
Numbered in. I'll make a motion to come out of recess at 7:34 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 13, 2023 closed meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any changes to the minutes? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the September 13, 2023 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the consent agenda, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mr. Leclerc. Does anyone want to take anything out of the consent agenda? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Communications. I'm going to ask our student representative, Matthew Cusson, to please give us his report.
Is it on? Yes. Thank you, President Borger. For my first report, I would just like to go over some of the recent events that have taken place at WHS. On September, on Saturday, September 16th, we had our homecoming dance, and I personally heard from many students and teachers that it was a great night. Last year's homecoming dance, we had a couple of incidents where the fire alarms went off, but this year, we were able to avoid that with extra chaperones in certain locations.
Louder. Yes.
Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. So, we are able to avoid that with extra chaperones in certain locations. Next up, we had elections that took place last Wednesday. Class elections for student government took place, and we had new and returning leaders from all four grades in our school. I would just like to go over them quickly so you can get familiar with their names. For freshmen, we have President Zakari Gill, Vice President Jaleen Cruz, Treasurer Annalise Medina. For sophomores, we have President Kaia Boishman, Vice President Amberly Ripley, Class Activities Chairperson Sauna Shaver, Public Relations Addison Thebo, Treasurer Saul Palafox, Secretary Inara Gardner. For juniors, we have President Mina Antunes, Vice President Monsortier, Public Relations Leilani Sanchez, Class Activities Chairperson Janaya Alexis, Treasurer Jalen Durasuk, Secretary Ariana Heck. For seniors, we have myself as president, Vice President Kristi Santifong, Public Relations Dorothy Parker, Class Activities Chairperson Miriam Kaba, Treasurer John Scully, and Secretary Ally White. Moving on, I would just like to briefly bring up the shelter in place that took place on the 21st, last Thursday. I just want to mention it so that we keep the idea of school safety in the front of our minds so that all of us can continually be thinking about and coming up with new solutions to ensure fully everyone's safety in school. From my perspective, I'm very thankful that we have protocols that are used in situations like these, and I acknowledge the hard work that goes into managing these situations and ensuring everyone's safety, but I also acknowledge that there's always room for improvement in today's society, so that's always something to be thinking about. Looking ahead, while it was a somber day last Friday with it being Mr. Gill's last day, the WHS school community stays, remains optimistic for the school year moving forward, and we look forward to seeing who our new president, sorry, new principal is moving forward. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Cusson, great job on your first report, and congratulations on being elected president of your class.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the report from our student representative. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dr. McGee, I'll ask you for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the committee has the Wensocket Education Department staffing changes, the most recent staffing changes. There is one teaching position that we have added since the last school committee meeting, chemistry teacher at Wensocket High School, in addition to numerous hourly stipend and extracurricular positions throughout the district. We are in the process, as the committee is aware, of trying to fill as many positions in as short amount of time as possible. We have one administrative position that we are looking to fill, I'm sorry, two administrative positions that we're looking to fill. We have 10 teaching positions, two secretaries. We have 38 teacher assistants. We're actually hopeful that we, of those 38, we have seven from a new company that we just started, that we just signed a contract with. They're in the process of providing us with seven new teacher assistants, so that number will hopefully go down to 31 as soon as those folks start here in the Wed. So, again, we are continuing to do our due diligence to fill as many of these positions as possible in as timely a manner and fashion as we can. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee may have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Anyone? Then, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. School Subcommittee reports. I'll ask Mrs. Kepiscus and Vice Chair Burke to give us the Policy Subcommittee report.
I shall defer to Ms.
I was just going to say, I presume you're deferring. The Policy Subcommittee had our first meeting of the 23-24 school year on September 20th, 2023. After our minutes were approved, we discussed our first policy, which was the field trip policy. We'd been discussing this since before the summer break. The main issue we left hanging was the administrators who were seeking language which permitted them to exclude certain troublesome students from field trips in the administrators' discretion based on history of behavior which may give rise to a safety concern. After careful consideration and review of the law, Council strongly recommended against including any such language, the reason being, our policy ties all field trips to the advancement of the educational plan, and denial of participation for anticipated behavior would be a denial of access to education without due process and essentially a suspension imposed without any hearing, perhaps without even an actual violation. If there's any lawful cost imposed discipline based on an incident which occurred close in time to the scheduled field trip, the student can be denied participation in the field trip as a consequence, but this is not done in anticipation of behavior which may but has not actually occurred. At best, the policy could suggest the teachers or administrators reach out to the appropriate directors in district to put in place any extra supports which might be needed for the child in question to participate. The Subcommittee then decided to send this policy onto the full school committee as drafted for discussion and approval, and you will find that on our agenda for tonight. We next discuss the graduation policy. This policy as drafted is based on RISE regulations and specific graduation requirements. The intent in reviewing the policy was to address issues around how and when decisions are made to determine when deadlines for qualifying to graduate, graduate with the present cohort, and whether a student can or cannot cross the stage as part of a graduation ceremony in June with graduation requirements incomplete. The policy needs to address when this decision is made and when and to whom it will be communicated. A summer graduation in August for those who do not make the cutoff for completing their outstanding credits in time to participate in a June ceremony might be added. Those would be for students who are completing two or less credits over the summer. The distinction between a deadline to complete credits for a diploma with a senior cohort as set by RISE and a deadline for determining whether a student may participate in the June graduation ceremony was discussed in detail. The need to create a system for communication regarding these issues with families where appropriate was discussed. The policy was held for further review and discussion at our next Policy Subcommittee meeting on the basis that we have adequate time to address these issues before we face these questions with the 23-24 cohort. Student activity account policy was listed on our agenda for discussion but at the direction of council. This policy was not discussed. No draft was presented in favor of discussion at a future meeting. With regard to rescission from the old policy manual, Chapter 5, otherwise known as sections P. 5-1 through P. 5-7, addressing matters with regard to certified personnel was recommended by Council to be rescinded in full due to the adoption of superseding policies, there being no need for a policy on the issue, outdated information provided in the stated policies and/or the policy being superseded by language in the prospective collective bargaining agreements with various unions. Two exceptions. At the request of the Human Resources Director, while the outdated policies regarding substitutes and student teachers are recommended for rescission, new policies addressing both will be added to our policies for discussion at a future meeting. Policies for review at future meetings, four items were added to the list: special education diploma requirements policy, substitute hiring policy, student teacher policy, and attendance policy. The list already includes curriculum policy, grouping policy, homework policy, and fundraising policy. The next meeting of the Subcommittee will be on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, at 4:00 PM at the Wensocket Middle School at Hamlet, Room 124. On the agenda will be the following policies: continuation of the graduation policy, the student activity account policy, and a discussion of the non-union benefits policy. The meeting adjourned at 5:20 PM. That concludes my report, unless you have something to add, Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any questions for her? Then, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Policy Subcommittee update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into conferences and discussions, and I'll ask Mr. Perrier to give us the financial update. Mr. Perrier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of the school committee this evening is the May 2023 fiscal update. While this is dated to May 2023 fiscal update, it's really, at this point, the books for fiscal year 2023 are about 95% closed, so I feel this is a pretty accurate interpretation as to where we're going to end at the end of the fiscal year. Let's jump right into it. I'll start with the financial highlights on the revenue side. Locality has been adjusted to include the additional $150,000 contributed by the city for fiscal year '23. The total contributed by the city for fiscal year '23 was $16,566,330. This is the amount that is anticipated for contribution by the city for fiscal year '24, our current fiscal year. Medicaid reimbursement finished stronger than anticipated, coming in almost $80,000 over budget as opposed to $270,000 under budget as it had been tracking. Medicaid usually does close strong at the end of the fiscal year. Finance is usually conservative, though, on the revenue estimates, so it is not surprising to see that at this stage. On the expenditure side, all regular salaries are $474,000 under budget at this time. When netted with the employee turnover allowance of $1.47 million, this would put overall salaries $996,000 over budget. As we discussed earlier in the year, the district was anticipating moving salaries to SR3 for this fiscal year only, but due to better-than-anticipated surpluses on gains from closing out purchase orders, this was not necessary. Substitute salary line is $137,000 over budget due to several vacancies spread across the district that we had throughout the year. We're hopeful to reduce that a little bit this year and get those positions filled. Medical expenses are currently $1.28 million over budget. We were anticipating an OPEC transfer, but again, due to the strong closeout on outstanding purchase orders as far as recouping some uncovered expenses, I see no need to transfer any OPEC funds for fiscal year 2023. We'll keep that money in that account, and we can look to maybe utilize it this year or in upcoming years. Additional speech therapists, contracted nursing services, personal care attendants, and behavioral intervention expenses were moved to SR3. That journal entry was finalized, and it is incorporated into these numbers. One light thing I would like to highlight is our savings as far as electricity goes. It took me a minute to...
You see that?
No kidding. Well done, Brad. Talk about...
We actually see that in action.
Yeah, well, this was a little above and beyond the savings that I anticipated, but the reality is, the LED lights that we did install, why, they are working in most areas.
Mr. Perrier, we had 560 now?
Yeah, we're continuing to save by the moment here.
Okay, it's ours fault.
Maybe, you can just shut all the lights off here and really save some money. No, the reality is, the LEDs had saved us a significant amount of money. I'm about a half a million dollars under budget, which is really incredible. And again, this is more the exception than the rule. I think overall, they've been pretty well received, but yeah, the timing couldn't be worse on that one. We currently have moved expenses off the general fund at this time for building improvements, furniture and fixtures, and technology-related hardware. They have been transferred to capital funds at this time. That will be finalized when we fully close out the books. That will be the last entry that we make to get us to an even balance for the year. As of right now, we're projecting a $275,000 surplus at this time. Again, as you may recall, we did have to use fund balance to balance last year's budget, but it's not going to need to use as much fund balance at this point, so that's a promising thing, and that money will roll forward into next year. And finally, for our October meeting, we'll be presenting a finalized FY '23 report, which will be our June '23 report with all journal entries finalized, and I'll also be providing our first update and our first look at fiscal year '24, so I'll be providing you two reports at the end of October. At this time, if you want to talk about anything other than LED lights, I am ready to answer those questions.
The timing, Al's walking in now.
Oh, yeah. It's ours fault.
Just on the topic.
Thank you for saving this money, Mr. Datariani. Thank you very much.
Extra thousand tonight.
An extra thousand. Mr. Perrier, does that mean when we look at the fiscal '24, the next budget, when we come in to look at, are we going to be seeing the impact of the end-of-ESF funds this come in to look at, are we going to be seeing the impact of the end of SIR funds this up next budget, or is it going to year after?
It's going to be in the upcoming year. That's the last full year for SR3. Just to kind of give you a glimpse of what's happening there, we spent about half of our SR, a little less than half of our SR3 funds in fiscal year '23. So we do have a good SR3 and leap spend through the first fiscal year. Now, for this fiscal year, we're looking to be a little more conservative with our SR3 funds, and the reason is, well, we're transferring out to the end of this, so we're going to kind of have to start gearing up for that anyway. But by being conservative with SR3 this year, any leftover funds that we have, what we can do is take general fund salaries, create a credit and a savings, a one-time savings to the general fund, and that savings will then really be used to kind of kick off our capital improvement plan. So that was kind of always the plan all along. I feel like we're in really good shape here, and by using these SR3 funds, we're not going to dip, have to dip as hardly into other accounts to create savings, like our medical accounts, our OPEB accounts, our technology building fund accounts, and just our general fund surplus, our general fund fund balance, excuse me.
The, as you say, we'll be saying, we'll be going to the capital fund. Does the piece of the SR3 also being considered for whatever construction cost, the 6% that we're going to have to pay for the new school?
Well, that's exactly it, but we're not going to be paying it out of SR3. We're going to actually create a savings in the general fund through salaries through SR3, and then that savings is then going to be set aside and put for that 6% that we need to pay going forward. And the reason we want to do that, we don't want to pay for construction out of these federal funds because it brings additional regulations that really, we don't need to be dealing with. We can simply use that as savings, bring the savings into our general fund, and proceed about our business with the construction.
Excellent.
Okay. Any comments, questions for Mr. Perrier? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the financial update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Ms. Morell to give us the special education update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of you, you have my update. Like last time I reported out, I do not have the enrollment numbers right now. We're waiting for the October 1st snapshot to give our accurate numbers for that. So the next time I report out, I will have our numbers for special education. The next thing is the early childhood coordinator, Mrs. Heather Grockot, who is now Mrs. Heather Martley, will be conducting collaborative quarterly meetings with our early childhood coordinators out in the district for pre-K. She'll be working with HeadStar, CCF, YMCA, and others, most recently the Boys and Girls Club, to talk about our pre-K programs and how we're supporting the students in the classrooms there, and how we can strengthen our communication with the programs. Our case managers district-wide are starting to reach out to families and introduce themselves. They wait until October 1st due to movements in classrooms and movements from school to school, so parents should be on the lookout for those introductions of their team members and how to communicate with them if needed. We have an update on the ARP funds that we were given. Within the last month, we were able to train all of our elementary resource teachers on touch math. It's another intervention for them to add to their tool belt to help close the gaps in the math throughout the district. This week, we're, actually tomorrow, we're training our resource teachers at the elementary level and at the middle school level on UFLY, which is a University of Florida literacy institution. Yes. Sorry. They are going to be working with the program to help with the phonics for students and their reading comprehension and supports for another tool, along with the Wilson training that we've done earlier in the spring, to help support them in their reading. We also reached out to many of the teachers district-wide to see if they needed to purchase more sensory items for their classrooms, for materials for students. And then, last but not least, our room at the high school, the Transpro room, we have updated the old ROTC room, and it will be finalized this week. Once the walls are up and everything is complete, I will have pictures in my next report. Do you have any questions?
Anyone? Thank you very much, Ms. Morell.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the special education update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into new business, and the first item we have is I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the field trip travel policy for First Passage. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mrs. Kepiscus, would you like to take the lead on this? Or Mr. Burke?
I think I'd be pretty well went over the policy. It was basically intended to address issues regarding what trips require whose approval, overnight trips requiring superintendent's approval, day trips requiring the local teachers, the principals' approval, and then certain other parameters with issues that arose around that, and a clarification about trips that might seem like their school-sponsored are not. That was probably one of the biggest and longest discussions that we had, and we've incorporated as much of our concerns into this policy as it is drafted.
Okay. So if we have parents that are chaperones, I see that's part of the policies. Do they have to have a BCI?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so before they're allowed to, they have to be just like everyone else?
But as we say, that doesn't mean that we can prevent a parent who doesn't have a clean BCI from showing up at Plymouth Plantations when our school trip is there. They simply can't serve as a chaperone.
Correct. Okay. Anyone? Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Ms. Fashir Burke.
And an important thing that obviously began this whole discussion was something several years ago from East Greenwich and a former commissioner. And I think an important statement is that no student shall be denied participation in the field trip because of their inability to pay the full or partial cost of the trip. So if a student can't pay them, and they have to go because it's a curriculum-sponsored trip to school.
So the school will pay?
Cover the costs.
Okay. Mrs. Costa?
Just in reference to what Lynn just said about, oh, I just forgot now, about the policies. Oh, I just forgot. It just slipped my mind. If I remember, I'll ask. I just forgot what it was. Oh, the parent showing up. Sorry about that. I had to reference where we were. So if, obviously, they don't have a clean BCI and they show up at the field trip, now what if they, like, start trying to interact with our students? What, do we have anything in place for that? Because like, what if a parent that's not supposed to be there shows up?
Teachers will intercede. If the teachers are unsuccessful in interceding, there's always security available wherever they go.
Okay.
They will not be permitted to interact with any children, probably not even their own.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure on that. Thank you.
If the field trips that we have, there may be some where the students have to come up with their own money. Is that possible? I'm just saying, because if...
Pay their way?
Yes.
No.
No. So none of them will, it has to be either fundraisers, or the school is taking care of it.
And a student can refuse to participate in a fundraiser, and that does not mean they cannot participate in the field trip, because all of our field trips are linked to our educational plan.
Yes.
You cannot deprive a student of the ability to attend a field trip because of their inability to pay. So the bottom line is, if you're planning a field trip, as a teacher, you must be able to secure the funding to pay for that field trip without looking to your students to bring in their little envelope with $5 from each kid.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Placed Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve, to rescind, the P5 series, pages 125 to 129 in the school committee policy manual. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mrs. Kepiscus, Fashir Burke?
The policy's really had to do with how you place, how you hire and place substitutes, how you hire and place student teachers, and how you hire and place staffing. All of that has been replaced by other superseding policies or creating new policies with regard to how that occurs, because the policies as they stood did not reflect our current policies of how we actually do these things. So essentially, they're either superseded, will be superseded, or are so outdated as to not prove useful at all, or, in the case of certified teachers, covered by their CBAs.
Sounds like they got to go. These pages have got to go.
Also, the whole list of them come from 1992, is when they were last put into this policy. And back then, there was a resident requirement.
Yes.
To be a TA.
There was a residency requirement. Preference was given to substitutes and TAs.
That's in here, and obviously, we don't have that.
Any questions or comments? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Placed Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the preparation and submission to RIDE of a fiscal impact report regarding the application of RISE Preparatory Mayoral Academy to increase seats for students from the One Socket School District. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Mrs. Costa. Mrs. Kepiscus, you want to take the lead on this?
Sure. I'm back again. Essentially, each Wednesday, the Commissioner of Education issues a field report, a field memo that's available to anyone, and in that field memo, at certain times of the year, she reflects applications for charter extensions or charter seats. I happen to notice that in the most recent Commissioner's memo, there was a list of public hearings with regard to certain applications. One of them included RISE Preps intend to increase the number of students' seats available to students from One Socket. This is what's going on. When RISE was set up, it was a conjunction between One Socket, Barville, and North Smithfield. In order to participate, those districts have to be willing, they have to indicate a willingness to participate in the charter school. There was a lot of litigation around RISE when it was first proposed, and the allegation on RISE's part is, in an effort to make that litigation go away, RISE agreed to put a cap of 50% on those students from One Socket to try to lessen the fiscal impact on the district as a whole, that they were going to cap the number of available seats in their flagship school, which is on Cumberland Hill Road, to 50% of the students going to One Socket district students, the other 50% split between Barville and North Smithfield. On North Smithfield, as I understand it, has started to send very few students. Some of the news reports I read about that indicated that was because North Smithfield's state evaluation grades are better than RISE's are. RISE, of course, disputes that, but their numbers are going down, down, down. Barville never did send a tremendous amount of kids. So essentially, they're alleging that there are approximately, at this point, at least 60 seats that are vacant, that are being reserved for Barville and North Smithfield, that they would like to fill with One Socket students because they have over 600 applicants for those seats from the city of One Socket, and they're capped out at that limit of how many they agree to, 50% of the students at the flagship school. What I was unaware of is that apparently, in January of this past year, they had made an application. I was aware they were applying to extend to a high school, but as part of that application, they were also asking to add an additional elementary school. I was not aware of that. I am aware of it now, and it was approved. There were only 38 people who commented on it, 37 of them were positive, probably because a lot of us weren't aware it was happening, because I would have absolutely had something to say about the fiscal impact on our district, because those non-flagship schools have no cap. Those seats can all go to One Socket students, taking our students away, which has a really dismal effect on our funding, because, yes, funding follows the student, but the people don't understand is, if you have five students who leave a classroom that has 30 students in it to go to a charter, we still need a teacher, we still need a TA, and we still need a classroom for the 25 that are left. So our costs don't go down, but our contribution for student aid does, because that money follows the student to the charter. And essentially, in their application to lift the cap in the flagship school, which is what's currently before RIDE, they're saying that they were facing budget cuts and layoffs because they couldn't fill those seats, they weren't getting the contributions from Barville and North Smithfield. I was unable to attend the public hearing which occurred a week ago Monday, but it's my understanding that there was, everyone there was speaking in favor of RISE. I think there was one person that spoke against. It's kind of shoveling sand against the tide, but I feel compelled, as the fiscal keepers of the district's funds, that we need to address the issue with regard to fiscal impact. So I did a little more reading, and a district who's impacted is allowed to file a fiscal impact statement with RIDE by October 15th. So I reached out to Mr. Perrier and said, could we possibly do something like that? And he had those numbers in no time, at least as with regard to lifting of the cap. And then we discussed, and he indicated he'd like to extend that out to what the cost is going to be with regard to the new elementary and the new high school. Even those are done deals, so that RIDE will have a full picture of the impact on the district. So I'm asking that we consider sending a letter, preparing a cover letter that will accompany Mr. Perrier's report, and I'm sure he has some comments he'd like to make.
Why don't, I know we've gotten two reports, there's two files that Brad provided, so, Mr. Perrier, would you go over those with us this evening?
Absolutely. I can walk you through both of them.
Both.
Mrs. Kepiscus, I think summarized it very well. There's nothing really for me to add there, other than to walk you through the actual numbers. So she mentioned two situations. The first is the removal of the cap for the flagship elementary school. So if you go to that spreadsheet there, it's a, it's a pretty simple calculation. If you look at our state aid for '24, and again, this is based on if this actually happened this year in fiscal year '24, I can't really project out state aid numbers in future years or average daily membership. So we took the state aid number, divided it by the average daily membership, and came up with a figure of about $14,500 per student. That would be the state aid that we receive per student. So if you add that with the tuition cost to RISE Prep, which is $1,255, it would actually be costing the district about $15,751.37 a student, for every student that attends a charter school. If you look at their application, you note that they have about 60 seats unfilled. If all 60 of those seats went to One Socket students, One Socket Public School students, you'd be looking at about a loss of revenue and additional expense of $945,000, so that's for 60 students, the loss of 60 students out of the One Socket Education Department. That's a loss of funding plus the charter school tuition.
Interesting that the Mayoral Academy indicated that they would have to cut positions, and because they're not, they can't meet their budget, yet we'd be doing the same thing. We'd be transferring almost a million dollars to the preparatory academy, and we would have to take the reductions. So to me, at the end of the day, it doesn't make sense for us not to respond. Why don't you go to the second report, which really can get us sick?
So the second one was really based on RISE's projected expansion for the upcoming fiscal years. In one of the reports that I believe it was from the Commissioner, it was the actual approval of the expansion, and that approval had expansion years. There's actually 12 years of expansion for RISE Prep, and if you take a look at that, we're looking to add close to 100 seats. I mean, it starts out at 100 seats, it tapers off a little bit, if you do look at that. It's 940 seats in total, they'll be looking to add by fiscal year '36. If there's no cap in place, and 100% of those students are One Socket Education Department students, we're in the ballpark of about $14.8 million in lost revenue and additional expense. Of course, if you cap it, it'll be half of that, 7.4 million, but as I understand it, there is currently no cap on these schools, so I think the $14.8 million cap, or the $14.8 million hit in fiscal year '36, I think that's approximately what we'll be looking at. And just for reference, our budget, general fund budget for this year is $100 million. So that's almost a 15% decrease in revenues that we'd be looking at in fiscal year '36. Not, and not assuming, who knows what RIDE will do in reaction to this. I know they've tried, been trying to address some of this through the Public Schools of Choice Density Fund, and I know legislation is looking at this, but kind of on the path we're on right now, this is, you know, my best guess as to what fiscal year '36 could potentially look like. is, you know, my best guess as to what fiscal year '36 could potentially look like if we move, if this moves forward as scheduled.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
I just want to remind everybody, because we've been saying that since the beginning, when we started talking about RISE, which was long before I sat on the school committee, but I was then Chair of the CLAC, and I'm still Chair of the CLAC. We talked about how essentially, RISE is just a duplication of our district's curriculum. It's a shadow school. Maybe they have less students per classroom, maybe they have a longer school day than we do, but it's not like the magnets that you see in Providence, where there's a focus on math, or nursing, or engineering. It is simply the same curriculum. It's an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school, the same as what we have, that we are essentially funding as if it's a private school. And the other thing that I failed to comment on, and I want to make clear, that North Smithfield did not send a letter of support with regard to the schools that were approved in January, the new elementary and the high school, which means that the North Smithfield students there are currently matriculating at RISE, will be permitted to go all the way through to grade 12. But with regard to the new school, they will not admit any North Smithfield students, which means the only students that will not, seats that will not be occupied by Wensocket students are whatever Barville might send, which even further increases our impact, because it's only going to be Wensocket students in those seats. And the applicants are 10 to 1 for those seats from Wensocket. For every seat they have, there's 10 students from Wensocket, or families from Wensocket, that are applying to have their students attend RISE. So it is going to have a significant impact. I'm not trying to deprive anybody of the ability to go to a charter school. What I want people to recognize, particularly RIDE and the legislature, when they consider the fair funding formula, that these charter schools do have a fiscal impact on the students who remain in the district. And with regard to CLAC, the special education students that RISE has are nothing like the special education students that we have. Their needs are not nearly as complex, and therefore, to meet their needs, their expenses are significantly different than what ours are. And that was my issue from the beginning with regard to these charters.
I guess as a minimum, a letter should be sent, along with the, those schedules, and maybe something else that we come up with. How do you, how do you suggest, and who do you suggest write this letter? I'm looking at her, by the way.
If you'd like me to prepare something in draft form that I would run by Mr. Perreault, and then we could put on the agenda for our first meeting in October, Mr. Perreault and I already discussed, we'd be well within the limits of getting the email out to RIDE with regard to the fiscal impact statement.
In addition to the letter, perhaps the committee should consider having a resolution with regards to the impact of these, of RISE, the charter school in Wensocket. I think we should have something drafted alongside with that letter, and maybe we can get Ms. Rapport to get involved with this, because I think a letter to ride, to ride our representatives and senators, whoever we send it to, the generals, it should go everywhere, as well as a resolution with us not supporting this. I think all of that should, should be, should come into play.
Agreed.
Does that make sense, everyone?
Agreed.
Mr. Perreault?
Chairman, it's also kind of ironic that the proposal for the new high school and the new elementary was approved by the commissioner in January of this year. In one way, she went about approving it was that she had to consider, and the council had to consider, substantial weight on the fiscal impact on the city or the town, and they should ensure that the proposal was economically prudent for the city or town. Well, I don't think we were asked.
I don't think we were either.
We were asked anything about the substantial economic weight that would affect us. They said they did a study, but-
I think as part of the letter, what you're reading right now should be incorporated in that.
I think that what's relevant is, and this is going to be strictly a political statement, is the school committee was not asked for an opinion as to the impact on the community. The leader of the community is asked as to the fiscal impact on the community. And the city of Wensocket, that's the mayor. In Barville, I think they have a town administrator. In North Smithfield, they have a town administrator. The town administrator from North Smithfield did not submit a letter of support to the January proposal, and as a result, that's why North Smithfield is excluded from sending any new students to the elementary or the high school, because they did not send a letter of support. That's this fiscal impact statement they're looking for. I don't remember being asked to provide one. Maybe Mr. Perreault did, and I wasn't aware of it.
Well, our mayor would certainly have been asked to send something, and she's not only the mayor, but she's the chairman-
Oh, she did-
-of RISE. Of course she did.
She did send a letter, and the language mimicked exactly what was in the RISE application to RIDE.
And the mayor didn't get ahold of us at all, correct?
No.
No.
Not that I'm aware of. I wasn't even aware of these proposals until Mr. Perreault mentioned to me, well, what about the new elementary school? And I said, what new elementary school? I wasn't even aware of it, and I read the commissioner's letter faithfully on Wednesdays, and I did not see an advertisement for a public hearing. I did not see an application for charter to increase the charges. I was not aware of it until he mentioned to me, and then I dug and was bothering Kim and Brad to help me find the minutes, to find where it got approved. And it was hard, because guess what? They're like so out of compliance with the timeliness of their minutes, it's not even funny. Their minutes were filed like five months later. But we finally did find them, but it wasn't easy.
And that certainly would explain the delay, since they did it with their corporation and send it out, so they were okay with RISE, but with RIDE, but we wouldn't have been able to read that anyway, until now, basically.
I don't, I don't know if the notice was published, I just don't know, but I couldn't find it, and I certainly, you read the commissioner's letter too, right, Mr. Burke?
Yeah.
And you didn't see it either. I wouldn't have known, except for Mr. Perreault, with regard to the new elementary school. The high school, I think we all heard of, P3.
So for our next meeting, we would like to have a draft of a letter with all the things that we're mentioning tonight, maybe with a draft of a resolution for the committee, and we'll take it up then.
So we meet the deadline of October 15th still?
Yeah, I think we can.
Mr. Perreault, I spoke to him this evening, and he indicated to me we could still make the deadline of October 15th, correct?
Yes, I believe our next meeting is on October 13th, so as long as something's finalized at that meeting, it can certainly be emailed out before the 15th, the deadline of the 15th.
What's our meeting? She says the 11th. The 11th, we're meeting on the 11th?
It's, I apologize.
No, no, it's fine.
And it has to be-
It's before the 15th. As long as we have a finalized resolution and we're ready to go, we'll be able to get that out the following day.
So do we- It has to be emailed, so there's not even a time delay with mail. The fiscal report has to be, impact statement has to be emailed.
Okay.
And I'll be sure to email it out, and I can include all of the school committee members on that to see that that was executed.
So if we get a draft and we have to make changes, that's going to demand quite a bit of turnaround. How do we speed up that, that process, just to make sure?
Well, I could prepare the letter and circulate it to Brad. Hopefully, by the end of the week, shoot myself in the foot.
I'm just saying, because then we could be looking at it, and should somebody be a point person to get comments? Can we do that, Sarah? No?
Roland.
So we can't. OMA, right?
Roland.
We can share it out to everyone before the meeting.
Not by us, but by Brad?
Or Kim.
Kim.
Oh, can we? Oh, Kim.
We can share it out.
Sorry, would you speak into the mic, please?
So Brad could share, share the letter out, and I suppose each person can send the comments back to Brad.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah.
But if there's any disagreement among the comments, you can resolve them, exceed them. In other words, you can't see what everyone has to say.
I think it's a better idea to come back, and I can definitely send it out, but I think to have the comments, I think it's better to have it during the session. The amendments be made during the open session, and then finalized.
We can finalize all comments at the next meeting.
Yes.
Four?
Four. It's the 11th, yes. Yeah.
Sarah, is this-
Thanks for checking my schedule, Sarah.
Sarah, Sarah, is this something we can discuss and finalize in closed session, or this has to be an open? Open?
Yes.
Okay.
And you're all signing. I'm not going down with the ship all by myself, am I?
I'm on.
Okay.
We're all on.
He got your back.
So I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to authorize Mrs. Kepiscus to prepare a letter that's going to be going to RIDE with regards, with regards to this particular issue.
I second.
And a resolution?
And a resolution, and a resolution. We'll ask Ms. Rapport to prepare that.
I get, letter, we send the letter to-
You and Brad.
And we use that letter to accomplish the resolution.
Yes.
Okay, I second it.
Do you want to reverse the decision of the, the approval?
I think all that, all that we can do is basically state what the economic impact is, and ask that that be given due consideration.
Do not extend the cap. Not, do not take off the cap.
Not remove the cap.
Not remove the cap, yeah.
Leave the cap in place.
Well, that too.
That decision is already made, too. That's not-
That's the only thing that we can really impact. The decision to add the elementary and the high school have already occurred, and that's a bigger fiscal impact.
So I, and I can talk to you, live in the conversation about it, and have a fiscal letter.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa. Anything else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Rhode Island Energy Award for lighting upgrades at Hamlet and Villanova Middle Schools.
Yeah, great.
Lights.
Do we, I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Do I turn it over to you, Mr. Naterian, or I'll turn it over to Superintendent? Dr. McGee?
Well, I'd like to point out that this is actually not an award for lighting, it was mislabeled. This is actually an award for HVAC repair at the middle schools.
That's the bitter irony.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, so it's not Al's fault today?
So-
It is.
Yes, yes. So, Mr. Chairman, this, this agenda item is actually for HVAC.
Can we talk about, will there be lit so we can talk about lighting? We can have an outdoor floodlight?